If we can bring this meeting to order, everyone please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCullough, can we please get, is this on?
No, turn it on.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough, can we please get a roll call, please?
Mr. Seminero, here. Mrs. Hamill.
Here.
Mr. Kurts, here. Mr. McCollough, here. Mr. McGlocklin, here. Mr. Pye, here. Mr. Shumood, here. Mr. Wolf, here. And Mr. Bezos.
Here. Okay, under announcements, this board had an executive session to discuss negotiations of personnel before this meeting, and we will be having an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel. Under agenda edits, I'd like to move that we take 7A, 7B, and 9D and move those to the front so that the children that are here to accept awards or make presentations have an opportunity to do so before the meeting gets going. Are there any objections to that? Okay. Any other agenda edits by board members? All right, seeing none. The procedures for public participation are in the inside jacket cover of the agenda that you all have. We will be holding everyone to a three-minute rule, and you have to get up to the podium, state your name and address. We will also be monitoring the amount of time that we're spending up front on public participation, and if we believe it's getting to be onerous and we need to move on with our meeting, we will bring public participation to a close so we can move forward with the meeting. Okay? Now, having said that, we would also ask, we know there's a lot of people here, people want to talk about items that are on the agenda, we'd also ask if you have something to say that repeats something that somebody else said for the sake of brevity and to make sure everyone has an opportunity to present a different view, we'd ask you to allow someone else to speak for you on that opinion. If that comment has already been made, for the sake of expediency, let's not get up and repeat the same thing that somebody else said just before you. Okay? Having said that, are there any presentations by the public on agenda items? I'm sorry, what?
We're going to do these first. We're going to do these first.
Oh, you want to do those first? All right. Okay, I'm sorry, before you stand up, we're going to bring the kids forward for the presentations, and then we'll allow you to speak. Thank you, Mr. Bezos. We have first to recognize our BCTC students of the third quarter. Each quarter, BCTC, our Burke School and Technology Center instructors select a student from their program whose attitude, skills, and knowledge gained during that particular quarter is above and beyond the standard. The student shows initiative and integrity in performing their tasks and is overall the best student for that quarter. So for those students, even though they may not be here, as I read your name, if you would please come forward, we do have a certificate for you. Amanda Brightigan in cosmetology, Andrew Clauser in service occupations, Kurt Gier in carpentry, Tristan Hawes in protective services, Monica Nagy in dental occupations, Austin Quinn in automotive technology too, and Autumn Wagner in health occupations. So that is the total list of names. So for those students that are here, if you would please come forward to receive your awards, I'll give them a round of applause. The others who aren't able to be here this evening, we will forward their awards to them. The next one, we have labeled APC fundraising students, a little interesting story. We have two of our younger members of the community, two Amity Primary Center second grade students, that wanted to start a business and give the money that they made to charity. They came up with an idea to make bracelets and sell them at different events. Within three weeks, they raised over $2,500. All the money raised was donated to the American Cancer Society and the Daniel Boone Relay for Life. These two inspiring young women in business are Ms. Lauren Massengill and Ms. Julie Slovaden. So congratulations, girls. Thank you, Mr. Bezos. Next is student government. Can we get the student government representative to approach the podium, please?
I'd just like to take this opportunity to introduce the student government president for this year, Mr. Patrick Stebb.
I like to refer to talk about really related, the event just happened, the academy began. We raised about $100,000, just about on my way to anything, but it was a great turnout, a little fun being, it was fun, it was a great thing to do. What happened a few weeks ago, the prom, it was a fun thing to do, it was a great experience for seeing we graduated going to college next year. We also raised a lot when I went out to, of course, but. And coming up soon, we have our nominees for new student government president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, so that's coming up soon. We're excited to have a new year coming up next year. We have a lot of things to plan, will not be personal, but we have a lot of things to plan for next year, doing a bunch of stuff with them, but that's all we will talk about.
Thank you very much for reporting. Congratulations on really late for life. Okay, presentations by the public on agenda items. Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Wintella. I live on Karen and Drive in Burnsville, and I am one of the three district school psychologists. I'm here to provide you with information regarding the position of school psychologists and help you make informed decisions regarding the retention of all grades. A school psychologist is trained to work with students and their families to identify and address learning and behavior problems that interfere with school success. We evaluate eligibility for special education services. We can support students' social, emotional, and behavioral health in counseling and consultation. We can teach parent skills and enhance home-school collaboration. We can provide threat assessments and crisis intervention. We help coordinate community support services. I could go on. We are trained to do quite a bit more than we are doing currently because of the sheer volume of referrals. So when it is suggested that the district does not need three psychologists, I completely agree, because we actually need four. Having said that, we all know it comes down to finances, so let me give you some reasons why it would not be financially feasible to have only two psychologists in this district. By the end of this school year, the three psychologists currently employed by the district will have completed 232 referrals. That number is not likely to decrease with more children in each classroom and less days to come out. The number will increase. The average completion time for cases is approximately 15 hours. 15 hours is derived from consensus of the information provided by psychologists in the county who we polled. In an attempt to stay within compliance this year and last year, a fourth psychologist was contracted to complete cases because we were unable to keep up. Why is it important for us to keep up? Because Pennsylvania state law says we have 60 calendar days to complete a referral and have a report in a parent's hand regardless of holidays, field days, SSAs, or whatever else comes along. If we do not, possibly legal action can be taken against the district, not to mention the fact that the student continues to struggle. If three psychologists were unable to complete the work this year, then with only two and their case loads increased by 50 percent, we most certainly won't be able to keep up next year, so we would be out of compliance with the law. Cases out of compliance raise the risk of litigation and due process. Due process cases started approximately $10,000, so the potential financial risk to the district was around $750,000 without having a third psychologist to handle that work. Also, the court could award compensatory education in an amount of two and above $100,000, and that has occurred in this district within the past decade. And then you should also consider quality of evaluations. If we are forced to attempt to meet the timelines with two psychologists, the quality will suffer. Mistakes could occur, and I'd like to think it, but problems may be overlooked. It has been suggested that our reports may be too lengthy. The evaluations that we currently write are periodically reviewed by our research lawyer.
I hate to interrupt you, but we've reached our three minutes. Thank you. So, Mr. McCullough, if you wanted to provide more of a copy of what you're reading, please do so, okay? Thank you. You can do it now, you can email it to us later.
Good evening, Bob Pennington, 10213 Asher Drive, Douglasville, Pennsylvania. I've been a teacher at Danube for over 20 years, and I've also been a taxpayer here for over 15. There's a story that I read with my kid every year entitled "All Things are Late." The basic plot of the story is that a king is modeled by roving frogs in the evening, so he decides to order, in order to have these in quiet, all the frogs must be eradicated. His counselors, in fear retaliation, agree by saying, "Yes, it is good." However, one counselor responds with, "All things are late," which confuses the king. The story goes on, and the frogs are killed off, and the village is now under attack by swarm mosquitoes. Since the frogs were no longer there to eat the mosquitoes, and mosquitoes multiplied and became a horrible pest of the village, eventually this made life unbearable, and everyone fled the village. The central theme of this story, due to the kid's ignorance of food chain and ecosystem, another problem was created, the mosquitoes. His counselor, being in fear of being punished for voicing their own opinions, agreed. If the king was given the knowledge that the frogs that ate the mosquitoes, maybe his decision would have been different. Do you have the proper knowledge? Elementary schools run like an ecosystem. Teacher schedules are influenced by every other teacher's schedule. Student schedules are not independent of one another. A change in one class's schedule is a change in several classes' schedules. Students need to be with teachers at all times. All of these things are linked. An elementary school is also like a food chain. Students get the basics they need to be successful in the upper grades, so the importance of things like band corps, basic skills gifted in the final are not to be underestimated or discounted. To someone with firsthand knowledge of what goes wrong in elementary school, you would be taking a terrible risk and would further jeopardize the integrity of our educational program. Nobody likes taxes, but until the system is changed, this is where we're at. Using all of your resources, proposed teacher concessions and raising taxes is the correct way to alleviate this problem. Cutting teachers and programming is not. I have to make decisions as a parent, a taxpayer, and a teacher. Just like any parent, I want the best for my child, I want to give him the opportunity that will afford him the success. I will probably teach a billion until I retire, but there is a likelihood that I need to flee this village or another one where the quality of end-of-life childhood education is placed above all else. How many of you are going to say, "Yes, it is good"? How many of you should say, "All things are late"? Thank you.
I live at Lyson Hunt Russell Avenue in Douglasville. I am a Daniel Boone graduate, class of 2011, and simply put, I am one of the many who has programmed success stories. I ended my senior year as a lead in the school musical with section leader in the choir and a soloist at the spring concert. To the people in the audience as I perform in front of, I seem to have it all going for me. But none of it would have been possible without my music teachers. Mrs. Benn had the power to inspire me to challenge myself musically in ways that I never thought I could, but I wouldn't have been ready for her training if it weren't for Miss Parrish at the middle school. When I first auditioned for Miss Parrish, I couldn't get a high note to save my life, but she taught me how to control my breath and my posture, and really taught me how to sing. But even that would not have been possible if it weren't for my elementary years with Mrs. Giovanni at the time, and Mrs. Saneley, who started teaching me the theory behind music and how to read music, and encouraged me to take private piano lessons. Every step in my musical career would have built up with a previous teacher taught me, and nothing I did as a senior would have been possible without every level of my music education. And as some of you know, I am also the coach of the swim team at the Amity AC pool. This past weekend, a bunch of my swimmers and I participated at Daniel Boone's Relay for Life, and one of the topics that kept coming up under our campsite was at this week's concert, right here at the middle school. The look in their eyes, you might see their excitement about performing, there's nothing else I can compare it to. Some of them were nervous about solos, some can't wait for mom and dad to hear their favorite song, and some were only concerned about the shirt they have to wear, but they're all excited beyond belief. And I look at some of these kids and I see myself, because some of these kids want everything to be excited about without the music in their lives. Some of us weren't good at sports and had to work really hard to get good grades, but music gives them an outlet to express themselves, where they don't have to work pretending to be something they're not, because the music friends here are a place they call home. Now, I'm not going to college for music myself, but I would not be the person I am today without the music program at the Daniel Boone School District. It gave me the opportunity to build friendships that will last a lifetime. It gave me the self-assurance to know that if I worked hard at something, I could be great at it, and it gave me the confidence to be the person I am no matter who's watching. The customer being proposed will not directly affect me. In fact, they will not affect most of the people in this room, but they will have an enormous impact on the lives of the children in this community, and that's why they're all here, because every one of us cares about these kids and only wants what's best for them. And we need to remember that and keep it in the forefront of our minds with every decision that is made. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that this is the time in which I have a few moments to speak. I just had some questions before the vote takes place on AP participate, because now is the proper time to ask those questions.
I don't think we're taking any action on pay to participate tonight, are we? Are we voting on it tonight?
There's no resolution.
Okay. So now would be the time to bring it up.
Okay, thank you. My name is Robin Winovich. I live at 234 Lowell South Drive in Douglasville. I'm here to ask a few questions about the math utilized to figure out the different categories on pay to participate as it pertains to sports. Due to recent numbers being off of the closing of APC, I want to make sure as a parent that plenty of pay is a fair and equitable amount. I'm not here for a free entitlement as what was discussed in the Revenue Enhancement Committee meeting last week. I pay tens of thousands of dollars between school activities and outside school activities for my children to be involved. I also have a say that nowhere, every penny of that money goes outside of the Daniel Boone School District. One of the statements made by a member of the Revenue Enhancement Committee was that their belief was that only one athlete participated in three different sports when the number is over 30. This statement leads me to believe that the committee is making a decision to think on things that perhaps they know very little of. First question is, when the formula was utilized to capture approximately a third of the cost for a sport, what all was included in that number for each sport?
What were your other questions?
That's the first question. Second question is, has anyone looked at the cutting of costs for each program, such as ticket taker fees, or in the instance of volleyball, you had an eight-year-old gentleman who happened to be the security guard who stood in the hallway when the NCAA basically recognizes the coaches as well as the referees being fair enough security.
Okay.
And actually, the rest of my questions depend on the answers of the Revenue Enhancement Committee.
Okay, we're going to limit this to three minutes. So, Ms. Hamill, do you want to address some of those?
Are we going to cover it all later? And then she can actually stand up, because then I can cover.
Well, if she's going to have more questions about it later, I'd rather we address everything.
Well, first of all, it's not pay to play. I didn't say pay to play, I said pay to participate. Well, even that, we're picking all the activities and looking at all activities, student activities, and I just want to remind people that those activities were put on the cutting block in the very beginning because it's cost us over $685,000 to run activities.
I'm not questioning the cost.
Okay, ma'am, wait.
I'm just questioning.
Ma'am, one second, we got it. She's got two questions here, she's going to try to answer for you, okay? And if you're going to interrupt her answer, we're not going to get anywhere tonight, okay? Please, continue.
When I broke those things down, I took the actual costs that was given to me by the business policy. So all activities are brought in. So when I was breaking it down, we started to look at the cost minus the ticket prices, or meaning ticket revenue. It was suggested that we start doing a value system rather than just picking every nickel and dime and looking at it. So we did take the cost on which the sports and music costs, and then put a value to how that worked. It was based on the cost, but that doesn't mean that every category that I put down covers the cost, but no means does the breakdown covering the $685,000 that is currently costing the school district.
Okay, next question.
Okay, so my example would be girls volleyball, we had 36 players, would pay a total of $10,800.
Ma'am.
If that is a third of the cost of the program, I have a question. If that's a third of the cost.
Please get to the questions, please.
Excuse me?
Please, can you ask the question, please?
Okay, if this is a, and here's my question. If this is a third of the cost of the program, the program would cost $32,400 to run, which isn't including gay receipts, because I have access to that at this point in time. My numbers are old, however, in 2011, 2012, the cost to run just the girls volleyball program was $21,000. In addition, boys softball, excuse me, boys baseball and girls softball was exactly the cost.
Ma'am, is there a question? Is there a question?
There is.
What's the question?
I don't understand the distribution of the categories.
Okay, we'll get to that at the voting part of this meeting. I mean, I think Ms. Hamill explained to you, and it's been explained multiple times, both at these meetings and at the Revenue Enhancement Committee meetings, that the way the recommendation's been brought forward is we looked at it from several different angles. The first is, what's the total cost of the program? Okay? It's $680,000 a year, and it's growing at $10,000 to $15,000 a year thereafter, okay? The second part of it is, what is a reasonable fee that we can charge to help offset those costs so these programs become affordable for the school district and they can stay long-term? All right? So the board, I think, well, I'm not going to speak out of turn here, but I believe the committee set a goal that they would like to see at least 30 percent of the total cost of extracurriculars covered by activity fees, okay? So you can reach it several different ways. You can raise a flat fee on everybody, you can do a scaled rate where you just take a menu, and the most expensive sports pay the most money, and the least expensive sports pay the less, and it was suggested that we do a tiered system and try to limit the number of tiers that are in there to make it simple to manage and easy to afford. So they looked at the individual costs of the individual sports on a per-student basis, and they tried to estimate to the best of their ability what prices would be a reasonable price to charge for those activities. They do not cover 100 percent of the cost of that activity. Some sports cost $800 per student. You simply can't charge that much and get students to participate.
I understand.
Okay. So I believe that answers your questions of what costs were included in the formula. All the costs were included in the formula. Transportation, overhead, which would include our athletic facilitator trainers, things of that nature, it also includes the stipends for the coaches, all the costs were considered, except debt coverage and things of that nature for the facilities themselves. Did the costs, did we look at cutting each program? No, we did not look at cutting individual programs.
That was my question, sir.
Did you look to cut the cost of each program?
Not to cut each program, but cut costs within the program.
We've looked at cutting costs across the board. Your three minutes are up, we're going to move on to the next person, please. Thank you. Ma'am.
My name is Jessica Swanson. I live at 112 Cameron Drive in Douglasville. I'm here to reveal you on a more personal level after debate of what I should do. In elementary school, despite what most people know about me, I was bullied, many people did not help me at all, and I spent a great deal of my childhood alone. And in this amount of time, I resorted into education. I found myself through my lessons and through schooling, and most importantly, I found myself in art. I spent every single day at my kitchen table doing artwork for hours, which anyone's likely can tell you. And I did this throughout elementary school and at middle school level. Every childhood scrapbook says I wanted to be an artist when I grew up. And I continued this, and in high school, I participated in the art program, and approaching my senior year, I had to make a choice between taking AP calculus and AP painting and drawing, and I chose AP painting and drawing. This choice will affect me for the rest of my life, because it has been the most gratifying experience of my entire high school years, and it is what I spoke about in every college interview that I had. In my interview for Columbia University, which I will be attending in the fall next year, I spoke about art for a lot of courses. Of the half hour I was given to win acceptance in this university, I spoke about this choice and my experience in art throughout my entire life. And in my college essay, I would like to quote, "I had learned that my passions and curiosities transcended the social approval I had denied, giving me confidence and potential of the future." These programs, art, music, the clubs, they always give me hope, they give all the students hope. Whether or not you are able to stay after someone to participate in the clubs that will now be too expensive for you to be able to participate in, or if you're that student that can't stand any other class, okay, with art, it matters to you, it affects you, and it motivates you to wake up in the morning and go to school. For you to think that you could eliminate band and chorus and jeopardize the art program by limiting it to 20 minutes, or whatever amount of time you are looking at, is scary to me, it is terribly frightening, and I fear for the character development of all students for the rest of their lives coming from Danube if we have these laws. So I hope you'll consider our words, and everyone else here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 365 Russell South Drive. I just wanted to say that if we break this down in a simple way, the people in this room and the other thousands of people in this school district all voted you guys in to do a job for the people. I think the people are saying now, raise our taxes and stop cutting teachers and programs. So I'm asking you guys, since everybody voted you guys in to do your job, and that means raise our taxes and stop cutting our teachers and our programs. My other thing is, is I find it hard to believe in the paper today. I read that we're going to get rid of teachers today, and other people in this district, administrators are getting raises, and we're asking teachers to cut their salaries. And one more thing was, Monica, six months ago, you said that you were going to restructure our $5 million deficit, and in six months, the best thing that we could come up with was to add more money to the people that want to participate in extracurricular activities, and we came up with $100,000 revenue. In six months, all we could come up with is $100,000. I have a $5 million deficit. You said you were going to restructure, that's what you said when you said you were going to make this work and restructure. We restructured $100,000 with a $5 million budget. Do you have any answer for that, what your restructuring is?
Sir, do you have a question? What's the question?
That is the question.
The question is, we only came up with $100,000 of revenue?
Monica said that she was going to work to restructure this deficit of $5 million. My question is, what took so long, six months, and we only came up with $100,000?
Okay, do you have any other questions, sir?
No, it's too good of a question.
Okay. I think in answer that question, Ms. Hamill is not taking on the budget deficit single-handedly. There's nine people up here, we're all wrestling with a budget deficit as we have for the last four years. Every year, we look at potential sources of revenue, we look at potential sources of cuts, and we look to using our fund balance to solve the problems of the school district, and we will be addressing that later on tonight as well. We've come up with more than $100,000. We've come up with more than $100,000. We've come up with $5 million in terms of solving this budget deficit. Next question.
My name is Nicholas Hearney. I live at 307 Casey Drive in Douglasville. I'm in third grade at AIC. I would like to keep band and chorus because it helps the kids to get a feeling of actually playing in a band or singing in a chorus. Music is important to me because it helps me be able to actually read music. I want to have a chance to play in the band. I would like to learn to play the orchestra. My sister's playing the band, and I would love to listen to their music. I want the same chance. Please don't kill the experience of kids, let them learn to love music. Thank you for your job.
Thank you.
Lot of enthusiasm for this program tonight. That is good. I remember, I'm looking forward to seeing this crowd here. I remember coming to school more than two or three years ago, with my mic in the audience. But take this enthusiasm tomorrow, tell five of your friends, tell five of your neighbors, tell five of your enemies, I don't care, just go home and get yourself to Heinzburg. That is where we got to accomplish. Our school money is being wasted up there. The governor's, the governor's team up there is playing games with our money, and that's why we're paying for games down here. Thank you.
David Poole, 443 Hill Road, Douglasville. I just have a few remarks. Past excesses have created a budget problem here. We spend about $7 million each year to cover our debts of over $90 million. Even half that amount would be enough to reduce taxes and provide for all needed programs at this point. We can't have a duel and go back and eliminate the problem of debt accumulation, budgeting process falls of a past. We can only learn from them. It was Winston Churchill who said, "Those that fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat." And it was Albert Einstein who defined insanity as doing the same thing over and over and over again, expecting a different result. Both taxes and educational programs for our kids are important. We need to know what collectively we can afford, and then provide the best we can within those constraints. For far too long, our school boards have assumed taxpayers want and can afford it, regardless of evidence to the contrary, and thus, we are in the mess we are in. Current budgeting process, though, I assume is getting better. It's really little better than it has been. When we're unable to account for the difference between $600,000 closely to the Academy Library Center and $300,000, and not able to explain to the public how that happens, that's a problem. Okay, there is a solution, an immediate solution, that leaves current contract negotiations in place for 2014, 15 school year, requires no tax increase, and prevents historic restoration of some needed programs. Simply spend more of the district's fund balance, projected to come in at over $4 million by July 1st, or shortly thereafter. While there is a need to retain some rainy day money that is generally used to fund the school's operations from July 1st to September, when tax money begins to flow in, spending the additional money to take the balance down even to $2 million, in my estimation, would probably not leave the district in fiscally dire straits. Every year, we hear, the board frets over the amount in the fund balance, and every year it's restored to our current, or even better levels than last year. It has become a statewide noted issue. I have here an article from the Watchdog Organization that is critical of school districts who continue to raise taxes when statewide, excuse me, statewide school districts have socked away more than $3.2 billion in reserve.
Mr. Poole, we're at 3.
With the rate, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich Martino, 225 Roosevelt Drive. Very briefly, I wanna echo some of what Mr. Poole said, and I'm gonna ask the board, please, before you finalize your vote tonight on the budget, look at what you're voting on. The fund balance of the $4 million is our money that you've already collected in taxes and haven't used. So, before you raise your taxes again, I'd ask that you use our $4-plus million to not raise taxes and to restore the programs you feel are needed to be restored. I really need, I still have these $2 million in the fund balance, should be more than sufficient to cover the coming year, and we can worry about the following year, the following year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen Schmoyer, Farm View Court, Douglasville, PA. I'm just gonna echo both of their points as well, Mr. Martino and Mr. Poole. I don't understand why we have a tax increase proposed, and we also have this money in the fund. I am a taxpayer, I don't want an increase. I have a child in middle school. When we have $4 million, and he said that's our money, that should be used first, before you tax me, because you tax me $0.66 every year after that, I have to continue paying that. I was reassessed this year already. You're already getting more of my money. I want my child to have a good education, but I'm not gonna pay more for her to get less. Give me more. Give me more, give me more programs, give me more things back that you took away from me to wanna pay more for her. But what she's getting now, I don't wanna pay more. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no more comment, we'll move on.
Waiting for the end here. My name's Christopher Miller, East Main Street, Burton, PA. We've heard a lot of passionate speeches, and we were told to keep it short and consolidate, so I'm here for these people up front. To move from passion to compliance, I feel like we need, when we're thinking about cutting programs such as art, music, dance, and theater, there's some concerns when it comes to the legality of it. In the PA Code, Title 22, or, sorry, Title 22, Section 4, Section 21, 323 are the curriculums that each student is required to go through. Section F says, "Plan instruction in the following areas shall be provided to every student, every year of intermediate-level program. Plan instruction may be provided in a separate course or instructional unit within another course or interdisciplinary instructional activity. These subject areas include language, math, science, environment, social studies, and art. There's no weight on which one of those is more important than the other, as long as you teach them once every year. However, going deeper into the academic standards of arts and humanities of the Department of Education, there's a 14-page pamphlet of standards that students are supposed to be able to comply with from grades 3 through 12. And to cut these programs out of 20 minutes a day, or however more you wanna cut them, I find it hard to believe that teachers will be able to confidently and with, you know, good compliance, get all the students up to these standards. I think, not just wanna be here arguing for cutting programs. I know you guys don't make this decision, and we don't wanna have to be here fighting for it, but we're here to serve the students, and there are futures of art education and music education and sports. And I think the question is whether you're here to serve the taxpayers or the students. I think we'd all really like to know that you're here to serve the students.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Matthew Cano. I live at 112 Cameron Drive in Douglasville. I picked up the paper this morning, and I saw that elementary basic skills is up for the cut. I personally benefited from this program. I was not good at math in elementary school, when we had the math class, that's why I'm a poor everyday kid. That program helps students to have trouble with these basic skills, the skills that everyone needs to succeed in their school's career. Why would you cut this program for the children who need it the most out of anybody? That's all I can say.
Kelly Efter, April 20, at Taylor Drive. I'd like to speak to the new activity fees that are being proposed tonight. In essence, they're being doubled. Last year, we had $150 for sport, for the first sport, $75 for the second, and $500 for unlimited plus. The new thing's in place, a new club is in Marchandale, which is $300, a middle sport, which is $225, and just one club for $580. That's one child. So, if you have two children that do the same thing, they're now $1,100. In a school that has now been necessary to provide a unity committee this year so that people are treated fairly, is it really right to put this in place where you're going to divide us by class? If you're in Marchandale, if you're in color bar, if you're in any sport, are extremely important. I would imagine that all of you participated in something in high school. You were some type of leader, and that has given you the confidence to be who you are today, and to sit on the stage and to speak intelligently. And yet, you will take that away from children who are not able to afford that. It's very popular that praise today to say that this school should be run like a business, and it should be run like a business, if the business is fiscally responsible. However, it's not a business, it's a school, and you have a higher moral obligation. The product that you're producing is our next generation, and if you're going to make it subsstandard, then you should be ashamed of yourselves, and we will all pay for it.
Austin Peterson, 217 South Street Street, Burzrow. I've been a lifelong community member of the Burzrow Community. I'm a homeowner in this community, and I have a three-year-old daughter that I hope will be afforded the same education that I was afforded, that my wife was afforded, and that my, both my in-laws and my parents were afforded by going through the Dana Boone School District. The facts are right now, Dana Boone is one of four schools in the county that does not have full-day kindergarten. We have one of the lowest costs per student in the county, beat out only by much, much larger schools of Boyer County Redding, who get to take advantage of economies of scale. The big elephant in the room here is, the Dana Boone Education Association offered up well over $2 million in concessions, as long as we were assured these programs would be, the programs on the block today would be safe, not only next year, but for the future. Why not accept our concessions and meet us in the middle and keep these programs here for our students and our community? Mr. Basel, you were quoted in the newspaper, one newspaper had you at $5 million, the other had you at $6 million, that us freezing our salary for six months next year, actually taking home less pay for the first half of next year, and then lowering our raises, already contractually promised raises, lowering them for future years, would actually cost the district $6 million. I don't get the fuzzy math where us giving back will cost you more. The only way I can assume, the only way I can assume that is that you already have your mind made up that these programs are expendable and unneeded. What part of this budget is so unpredictable that you cannot predict two years, 12 months from now, and you'll be sitting passing next year's budget to guarantee us that for two years, these programs will remain in place? There isn't a wild card in the budget. I've asked you several times in private, now I'm asking you publicly, what is the wild card in the budget that you cannot project for 12 months from right now?
Do you have any other questions?
I would like to hear your answers to that.
Well, we're gonna run out of time, so do you have any other questions?
We'll go with that. We'll go with that one for now.
Okay. There is no wild card out there in terms of expenses. We know exactly what the key driver is to our expenses in the school district, and it's salaries and benefits.
So, why not take?
Sir, are you gonna let me answer the question?
Well, why not take adjustments to it then?
Well, because what was represented to the public is not what was actually the case. There are strings attached to your offer that you have not yet disclosed to the public.
We want concessions, I mean, I'm sorry, we want guarantees that there will be no furloughs of teachers, which results in no cutting of programs for the next two years. Last time when we gave concessions, we saw the programs we saved were cut the very next year, the first opportunity this board had to cut them. We're trying to give you millions of dollars in concessions, and all we're asking is those millions of dollars go to save the program. I think our offer meets you in the middle. We're asking you to do your part. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 8A. Motion to approve the minutes.
8A through C, second.
Any questions, comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, do I get a motion, please?
I have a motion, 8A through C, by Mr. Seminero, um, by Mr. Green, seconded by Mrs. Seminero. Mr. Seminero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McCully, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shumuh?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basel?
Yes. Moving on to presentation by board members, secretary's correspondence.
Yes, Mr. Basel, I have two correspondents. One's from Mr. Martino of the Taxpayers Association, asking us to outline our tentative agreement with the teachers. He's asking for the request that we make and publish. And the second one being from Peasers, they're looking for board members who wanna serve on their board from our board. I will make sure that every board member gets a copy of the letter, it's a four-year term, and they're looking for volunteers to serve on their board. That's it.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Okay, moving on to Berks County Intermediate. Okay, moving on, Burks County Intermediate Unit.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Basel. The Burks County Intermediate Unit Board Directors met on May 16th. We went through a series of routine approvals, and the CICU also highlighted the activities at the annual Burks County Convention of School Directors. And you know members of Burks County Intermediate Unit Board for 11 full-year terms, and one has grounds for school value, so they're likely to go one-year term, ending on June 30th, 2014. And you also approved the first reading of some policies, a policy that governs the purchasing, subject purchases that are subject to budget, purchases that are budgeting, returning a break point, safety, attractive services, and automatic external rehabilitation and cardio pulmonary assessment policies. Of course, I was moved on to the minutes like I do for all the CICU meetings. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Kurtz? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. BCTC.
Yes, our board met last April the 24th at the West Center. The items of interest were pretty small. They did open and award the construction bids to the companies that were built, going to build the Drivers Training Center for the CDL. So that's, that's going to be starting, breaking ground pretty soon. With all the changes that the township had put on, the price went up about $47,000. But they're still looking for the five-year payback that we had originally projected when we started. The other thing I want to report, the next meeting will be this Wednesday, May 22nd, at the East Center at 7:30. The public is walking, and there will also be, that'll be the senior recognition night for the students at BCTC. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wolf? Okay, seeing none. Legislative report?
The only thing I have is House Bill 76, that Bill 76 is still in committee. Made several contacts, emails, phone calls, from what I understand, and then coming with others. It looks as though that probably won't have to drop floor for vote or even conversation, nor does it look like it's going to be done in the fall, so it's going to have to be reintroduced again next year. There seems to be a lot of politics going on in this bill. Hope you'd be willing to step forward and make a motion to bring it to the floor for a debate. So, you know, the property tax elimination and the transfer, what form of tax doesn't look like it's going to occur.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Sheen? Okay, seeing none. Other reports, anything from policy?
Nothing from policy.
Facilities?
No.
Okay, revenue enhancement.
I was going to go over the breakdown of categories. All the board members should have received this information last week. So... All right, we're looking at clubs, being $55 per club. Category A would be $300 for boys' basketball, girls' basketball, golf, softball, boys' volleyball, girls' volleyball, and marching band. Category B was $225 per baseball, wrestling, football, field hockey, boys' track, girls' track, boys' bowling, girls' bowling. Category C was $150, cross-country, boys' soccer, girls' soccer, indoor color guard. I have winter color guard, winter percussion ensemble. Category D is $100, and that was for cheerleading. These categories are, were given to all board members, so I would like to have feedback on that. We also looked at parking for all students would be $50 for a parking pass, and all students would have to pay that. There would be a processing fee for facilities use forms, $30, and all these have been discussed for months now.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members?
You might want to clarify, I think your comment when you said all students will pay a parking fee, you mean students that drive?
Mr. McCully, can you bring the microphone? I'm having trouble hearing it.
I'm sorry. I think your comment, you might want to clarify your comment, it's for students who drive who pay $50, not every student in this.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes, it's stupid. Thank you.
I'm not sure if everybody understood that.
No, it's the students that drive to high school pay $50 for their parking fee.
I have a question for Mr. Sheen, Burks Row. We have an issue with having softball and baseball at different fees.
I had spoken to the administration about this. I believe that under Title IX, you want to ensure that there's gender equity as, in regard to the schedule. And with respect to the issue of softball and baseball, because they're comparable sports, one being female, one male, that I did have some concern regarding the disparity between those two, those two fees. I haven't directly reviewed this with the Office for Civil Rights. If the board desired, I could attempt to obtain direct input from the Office for Civil Rights on that issue.
Mr. Seminero, have you taken into consideration some of the outside fees? I mean, I noticed you have $300 for golf, but they're already paying for their own means fees on top of, which is probably 90% of that participation in that sport, they're already paying, they're paying, every time they go on the golf course, they're paying for the room you should have golf in. And I didn't even charge $300 on top of that. I would dare to bet that you'll eliminate golf from the school district by doing some foul. You're not going to pay, the other bunch of them have to pay $20 bucks every time they go off to practice or play or in a game.
This was based on?
Just the cost that the district sees.
Are they actually paying fees, green fees at each one?
Actually, I think, I think, I think the green fees are actually donated by the golf courses. I'm not sure of that. It used to be, I believe, a point on the foot.
We can check that. I don't think that's the case.
Let's make sure that that's not happening because...
I said, I believe at one point that the greens fees were donated by the golf.
Every single sport that I own is doing extra, they're paying extra to do the sport. They're doing fundraisers, they're doing everything they can to keep their sport going. These costs are directly from the district on what it costs to run the program. I know that almost, I know my kids, we constantly are raising money to keep our kids going, districts, events, or invitationals. Their football players are buying round, everybody is putting more money into it. Golf isn't any different. All of these sports were looked at for what it costs the district to run them.
Several years ago, I come to this board when we were first talking about activity fee, and I had an issue with it because it's a tax, we're even calling it fee or tax, the same thing. And I felt then that once you start and accept the premise that there's a tax involved, then forevermore, we're only going to be talking about how much that tax will be. And from what I've been hearing about, you know, people relive the life of the weekend, pulled me aside, I was talking to them, they said, they might, I simply won't pay for my child to be in this activity, like, I can't afford it. And if I have all of the kids, they said, I can't afford one, so I'm not going to pay for one and have another one, have to choose. And what I was afraid of happened, I had mentioned a couple of years ago, I said, once you institute this fee, what will happen is your revenue projections will not be met because you're looking at it as a dynamic, a static model.
Please, please.
You're looking at it statically, and what happened was, you know, the dynamics were that less people actually participated in those, in those activities. And the revenue that we pulled in that first year was a lot less than what was rejected, as I remember, was one of the things that we got to change the budget last year. And I think because the increase is so dramatic, I think that what you'll have is, you'll have, say, football, maybe you'll get, instead of 50 kids, you'll get 25, because that will actually pay off. And you'll, the revenue number will be much less, but yet, the cost will still be there, and the net will be less. And I don't want to get into the, you know, situation where we're counting on this money by instituting these fees, we set up a system where we exclude a lot of families, we're making a hard, gut-wrenching decision of simply not participating at all. So I'm just concerned with, you know, that fee, this fee structure. I understand, and I think you did a great job of, if this is the picture, what it's going to look like, this is what it's going to look like. And, you know, from what I've been getting from feedback, the picture isn't really good. I can't support it.
The feedback I got from most people was that there was not a family cap on it. So, over the weekend, I did relook at things, and I looked at it, there was a family cap based on what past caps were, like, the last two years. A family cap that I thought, a family of two kids might be capped at $750 for two kids to participate. The family cap for three kids would be $850, and that would allow those children to participate in what they want to participate in. So that was about as much as I could see, working with what people were telling me. It wasn't so much, I mean, we were told at REC, charge what you want, because my kids are doing activities outside of the school anyway. They're going to these clubs, and they're paying $400, $450 to participate in tournaments. You know, they were telling us, we want to keep our sports, we want to keep our programs, we want to keep band, we want to keep all these things, so find a way to make them stay. This is a way that I figured out how to make it stay. We're not only covering the true cost. And at a family cap, if that would help people budget their money for next year, that would be more...
Any other comments or questions from board members on fee structure?
I have a question. Our current policy allows every, let's say a family can't afford to pay $80.
Right.
I hope, and the policy says that, and that's the stupid place, correct?
There is, there is something that we've mentioned on how, if someone can't afford it, how they can go about doing it.
I think we have a still...
Yeah. I mean, if you have objections, I want to hear them, because we need to start looking at, what are we doing? Because in the outcome, if we don't do something, these sports won't survive another year. You know, all these people want things to stay, but there's no way to pay for it. So if we, do you want to go next year? I mean, save it this year, put it back on the table next year, lose it again next year? I mean, what are we trying to accomplish with not supporting some type of structure to help this along? Because costs are a cost, and they run every year.
There's no, there's no public comment now. There's no public comment at this time. Ma'am, there's no public comment at this time. The next time for public comment is the end of the meeting.
Okay, but that's not what I heard, so I just kept going.
Look, we're not, yes, the answer is, there is an opportunity for the public to speak and address the board at the beginning of the meeting, there's now an opportunity for the public to speak at the end of the meeting. I'm sorry, we're not taking questions from the floor at this time. You had an opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to make comments on the decisions that we were going to make.
These discussions can continue in the Revenue Enhancement Committee. You're welcome to come, or you're not limited, and we welcome a open discussion at those meetings. They're going to talk about the details much, much further. I think we need to make a clue. We're not going to get this kind of...
Correct.
What I do want to hear is that if board members have an issue, please speak up now so that we can move this along, either in Revenue Enhancement or figure out how to solve it without losing all these programs.
I do believe we need to evaluate this a little deeper. I really don't think we can sustain these kind of fees. Because otherwise, you won't have a program, you will not. There will be no... I think what we're looking for is a number, so, well, I don't know.
Have you had a chance to go through everything, look at what we sent you? This has been on the table for months. I brought this up in December, we've been meeting every month since then, and this is an opportunity for you to give me some figures that you can be happy with, before we have to lose the program.
You're not going to lose the program, you're currently in the budget for this year. You're looking to potentially raise revenue and save the program forward.
My thought process is, I don't, I, first of all, thank you for all the work done, but I think it should be there to be equal, no matter what sport it is, and I think there's going to be a cap on a family, and I still think $750, $800 is too much. You're talking almost over nine months, school year, $100 per family. You're talking a cable bill, you're talking, I mean, that's a lot of money for a student to pay. I think, again, we instituted it, I think there was, it was fair, I think, you know, bumping them up by something, but I think it was spread evenly among all sports. Students will start to pick and choose, parents will start to pick and choose for their students. I, and again, I understand how you came up with this thinking. I'm not criticizing the thought process, I just, I personally don't think that's the way to go. I think it should be spread evenly among all the students, I mean, all those athletes, whatever, clubs or whatever.
What figure are you comfortable in?
I, truthfully, Mr. Seminero, I really don't know. I don't have enough data in front of me.
Did you look at the data since December?
Sure. And again, I don't think that's for me to decide, I think that's for the committee's side, and again, I...
The committee has met every month since December, and even if we have, so I want to...
Well, again, I'm not trying to be controversial, but it sounds like, and again, I'm not saying you have to go back, but I think we have to readdress this issue. Most of the board does not feel this is a little too high. Not that they don't want to do something, but...
What are you, where's your comfort zone?
I'm sorry, I, I don't, can't answer that.
I think what's going to happen, if we want to go back, a month from now, we meet again, try to figure out what we think is reasonable, come back to the board, everything is bad like that, go away again from them. We're trying to nail it down, that's all we're trying to do. We're trying to figure out what are the numbers.
If you're going to make me figure things, I don't know, it's a kind of...
I'm not putting you on...
No, I understand, there's just a nominal increase, you know, $5 or $10 excuse, or remove the family from $500 to $550 for the entire family, something I think that's more digestible, if you want to use that word, rather than going from, I mean, you're talking people who paid, a football player played $150, now they're paying $300. You doubled it, not you, the committee looked at doubling one year. I think that's what's not, you know, palatable for some board members.
I, and I totally understand, totally get it. And, you know, we get that, what we're trying to do is just get data so we don't go back in turn for no reason. So, you don't, you don't have to answer this question tonight, but I would really strongly move that, you know, find time to think about it, try to get a number that you think is reasonable when you have a chance to look at this, you know, try to make a point of looking at this, because we're trying to wrap this up, and send it to Mrs. Hammel. And, you know, then we'll take it to the committee, and we'll modify it to what we think everyone finds to be reasonable.
Have you guys asked the sports and music boosters to give some feedback, what, again, I don't think they're opposed to fees, but I think we may get some feedback from them. And again, I'm not saying that they're, you know, the absolute end, but maybe ask them what they know their membership could support.
They actually were at most of the RAC meetings and opposed to fees.
The board president stood up, the booster, the sports booster stood up and was against what we were...
Well, she can email me what she feels the fee should be, but I base it on expense, and our expenses are going to continue to grow.
I do believe that some of the meetings of Revenue Enhancement, we have a select few, the meetings that I attended, that could be representing football, and obviously, they're out, $300, probably isn't that bad, $300 for football. But obviously, we have, we do have these other sports. I would like to see more people out, maybe we need to hold the door here in the auditorium and get people out, obviously, we don't, we don't... I think that's fair. I mean, obviously, we're not nine board members, and you have four in the committee, and we have, what, 10 or 12 showing up?
I don't, I'm sorry, let me just step in for a second here. I mean, I think, I think the board needs to move this agenda forward, and we need to assist the committee in that regard. So we, you know, there's only a few ways you can, you can develop the model. It's either a flat rate system, similar to what we have, it's a scaled system, which is what's being proposed, and then we have a fee-per-sport system, which a lot of other states and schools in other states implement. And as a board, I think we owe it to the committee to tell them, go in this direction, because that's what we want to see in terms of the model, and then they can work on the numbers, knowing that that's the model that we want to use.
The board's already done that.
I know, and that's my point, is we've said, go with a tiered model, there was no objection to that from the board, so I think that's, that's the model we have to go to. So now the question is, is there a cap, is there no cap, what are the levels of the fees? What are the levels of the fees? Are we comfortable with the level of the fees? Are you charging per sport? Or is it, is it a two-sport maximum number? And if you pick two expensive sports, well, it's more expensive for you. If you pick two lower sports, it's less expensive for you. I think there was this issue of equity that was brought up. Why are certain sports that don't cost a lot of money being charged the same amount of money as something that does cost a lot of money? And so I think this tiered system tries to address that issue. So there is a little bit more equity and parity amongst the different activities that we offer. So, I mean, I heard some objections to a tiered system here, but, I mean, I think my recommendation to the committee would be to stick with the tiered system and.
Let's see it solved and done.
You know, but I think we all owe it to them to give them a number. You know, what's the number? Is it, it's, is it $800? Is it 500 bucks? Is, what's the number? I sit back and I look at.
What did the population of those that capped last year look like? Let's start as one sport, multiple sports. How many families capped out? Do you have that data?
Yeah. Families that capped out with two kids are five. Five families have that.
Right.
Family that had three or more children capped out, seven families have that. That's a total of 12 families that capped.
Okay.
There were other children that were on the free reduced, and those were numbered variously. There were 46 families that were on the free, and there were 11 families that were on the reduced. So that was the number that capped.
So you modeled, did you model your program using the?
I modeled.
The five that capped out of two, taking their sports? That we knew what they were and thought it ended?
I used what Ms. Scotts gave me, the participation report from 2012, 2013. It has every single student that participated in sports. How many played one sport? How many played two sports? I went through, and you can line all these up. She had it set up for me alphabetically. She organized it by, you can see how, what grade, how many activities they were in. I mean, I was looking at this, how many played two sports, how many played three, how many did clubs. It comes down to a breakdown on how many kids played two sports. You can look at it right here. The 12th grade, they could play one sport, two sports, three sports, one child played four sports. So you can see how everything is broken down. This data is accurate data given to me by Ms. Scott. So nothing here indicates, I mean, I went through and looked at, then I pulled this up to see how many families got capped. And I just took it and I sorted it out and figured out how to get an accurate number of it. So I'm really not making this up.
I don't think anybody suggested you were.
I mean, this is, this is a fact. This is what I have been given, and it's extremely accurate.
I think the process was, they looked at the overall cost per sport, and you had some that were way up here, and you had some that were here, you had some that were here. So they classified the sports by their overall cost structure in terms of bracketing. And then they assigned, you know, a letter, A, B, C, D. And then the issue was, well, now what fee do you assign to those different classes? And recognizing that they're not going to cover the cost of those programs, they're just, what's a reasonable fee to charge for that? I looked at it myself when I was reviewing it and just thought to myself, well, look, if my kids are going to go play a sport at AM and the Athletics for a season, what am I paying? Or if they're going to go to the 422 Sports Center, what am I paying to send my kids to that?
Yeah, but I think the point is those, these sports are not at AM and the AC, they're not at 422 Sports.
No, I understand that.
My concern, and I just picked up a couple, like I said, you know, I look at volleyball, you know, and it's at the top tier. I understand that there's a limited number of children, students that play volleyball. There's a limited number of students that play golf. And because there's a limited number of students, the cost is dispersed over a limited number of headcount, therefore driving up. And I don't think that's necessarily a fair way of doing it sometimes, because you're going to eliminate some of the sports. I dare you, I dare you, you are probably do this, and again, with the thing Mr. Superstar talks about, if the, if, if the golf team, you may see it go away, if the girls volleyball team doesn't field the team because you don't get enough students to pay that fee to play volleyball for the girls, you would automatically then probably lose the boys volleyball team because you've got to have the parity of the two sports. Same thing could happen with baseball, you could lose the softball team. And that, that's my bigger concern. The fees are what the fees are going to be, but if you can't field the identical number for Title IX, then you automatically could start losing. And then as Mr. Wolf said, your revenue doesn't get to what we expect it to do. And then next year, you raise the fees, you try to raise that same revenue objection that may or may not ever get reached.
I have a question, Mrs. Hamel. Yeah, maybe, I didn't quite understand. You said, Brian.
Can you hear me?
It's on, I'm sorry. Yeah.
It's not.
Sorry. I have a question, Mrs. Hamel. You said it's about a third of the cost, right? How do you, can you, you know, back that off? I don't know, maybe, maybe the tiered system is the correct way to go, but maybe do a lesser amount than a third. I'm not sure. You know, the committee maybe went high, and again, I'm not opposed to the tiered system, but maybe you scale it back. Maybe, you know, first year's 5%, means 8%. Again, that, I'm not saying, I'm not giving a suggestion I'll accommodate because I don't have the figures in front of me, but rather more than to 30, you know, 30% of whatever you guys come up with, scale it back.
I agree. That's what I think we're looking for.
Hey, and that's what I'm saying. Again, I'm not, maybe, maybe we don't, maybe we don't do the cap, maybe we don't do, you know, the family cap, maybe, whatever, but then maybe back off that 30%, make it a more palatable amount of the cost for the first year. Like Mr. Wolf said, you can then go next year, keep building. If you go high in the first year, you're starting out way too high, in my opinion.
It's a second year.
I think maybe a question we should take is, is look at the adjustment to the present structure rather than redo the complete structure.
And cross-tier or something.
I understand tier structure, but, yeah, rather than 30%, I think Mr. Paul might go with something, maybe it's 20% or something, something less, where 150 or I'm going to say $5 now, $300, that's a big jump.
That's good.
And look, adding a figure to the existing tiered system we have and see where that gets.
Well, right now, we're at 34%.
Right.
Because it's 685,000 plus. What this proposal is that we're going to give 234,990. We're only really around 34%. If people would like to have it less.
Where did last year, where did last year's fee structure bring us?
We had 135,000.
135,000.
15%?
About 100.
That was 20%. Maybe you go to 25%, work a number back, and then take it in brackets and go from there. I mean, it's just a suggestion.
Run different scenarios up and presented so that we can have multiple things to look at next time.
Right, I see that.
And hopefully.
I mean, although they don't like.
More probably 20, 25.
Let's have Revenue Enhancement take that back.
Although the public does not like, did not like the fee, they, they've accepted, they've more or less accepted the 150 that we did, and if you add a little bit of that type of adjustment to that fee structure, it may be a little more palatable than coming out with what you got.
Well, and I think it's going to be more palatable, but I, I'm just going to say, you're not going to be outstanding.
Okay. Let's, you've gotten some feedback now from some of the board members? I think you, there's a tiered system in place, and now it's just a question of tweaking the numbers a little bit, and you guys can come back with a couple of questions. Okay? All right. Thanks. Moving on to foundation. Do we have the foundation executive director here?
Thank you for inviting me to give you an update on the Blazer Foundation, to give a little bit of background to those who might not know what the Blazer Foundation is. The Blazer Foundation is an independent nonprofit organization created and administered by a board of community volunteers and a part-time executive director. Our purpose is to enhance the education and development of Danube youth through supporting creative and innovative programs and sustaining community and business partnerships. We are partners with the Danube School District, its students, and its community. However, we are not part of the school district. When I was hired on April 1st, we put together a 30, 60, 90-day strategic plan to accomplish some goals. I wanted to go over some of those, give you updates on some of those accomplishments. We currently have a Blazer Foundation website with information on there. We also have a Facebook page, so if you are on Facebook, please be sure to like our page. One of our goals was to notify the public about the foundation through a press release that we gave to the local media. Stephanie Weaver from the Ready Eagle published a great article about the foundation, and last week, another article was published by the editor of the Southern Berks News. We continue to generate interest in the foundation through speaking to faculty and staff. I was invited to speak at AM and the Intermediate Center and also the middle school faculty to let them know about the foundation and how we could benefit the school. Also, Mrs. Torsha invited me today to the Professional Development Committee that she runs, and I was able to speak to teachers there about programs that we might be able to help with. I've also spoken at the PTC meeting, local monster. I would be speaking this Thursday about the Eastern Berks Business Alliance, the EBBA, made up of local businesses in this area. And I have plans to contact the Berks Borough Rotary, the Optimist Club, and the boosters such as the sports boosters and music boosters, as well as other nonprofits in our area, to find out how we might be able to partnership to help make our district great. We are handing out in the Tuesday folders, informational flyers that we got approved. Those will go out on the May 28 Tuesday folders to the four elementary schools. We're looking to build a solid base of volunteers who want to make a difference. On Thursday, May 30, we have scheduled a private meet and greet at the Keystone Villa to meet with local businesses to discuss ways we can partner in a mutually beneficial way. During the meet and greet, we will present the Educational Improvement Tax Credit Program. And I wanted to just speak briefly about that so everyone has the benefit of knowing about this program. The abbreviation for it is the EITC program. And on May 7 in 2011, an overwhelming bipartisan majority, Pennsylvania made history by becoming the first state to pass an education tax credit aimed at businesses and corporations. We are the only state in the country that has an EITC program. In 2008, the definition of a business entity was expanded to include S corporations and partnerships. And what this is, what the EITC program is, it is going to be able to provide students and staff with additional opportunities that cannot be provided via the school district budget. What this allows is tax credits that can be earned to eligible businesses contributing to an educational improvement organization. The Blazer Foundation has submitted an application to become an educational improvement organization. So companies that are eligible to, that do business in Pennsylvania can reallocate the taxes that they pay to Pennsylvania and make a donation to the EIO or to the Blazer Foundation and receive a tax credit from Pennsylvania. So instead of sending tax dollars to Harrisburg, companies can reallocate them to support the Danube School, the Danube School District via the Blazer Foundation. On the federal side of it, they're going to receive a tax credit from the state of Pennsylvania, but on the federal side of it, they have now made a donation to a 501(c)(3), and oftentimes then will get a tax deduction on the federal side of their taxes. If a business makes a one-year commitment to the Blazer Foundation, they will receive a 75% tax credit from Pennsylvania. If a business qualifies and they make a two-year commitment, they receive a 90% tax credit from Pennsylvania. This year, the maximum credit per business is capped at $750,000. A business can contribute to an unlimited amount of educational improvement organizations. So if Wawa's contributes to the Low Sun Education Foundation and the O R J Education Foundation, they're also able to contribute to the Blazer Foundation as well. For 2013, there is $30 million available through the EITC program. It's an increase of 34% over 2012, and every year, that amount has been raised by the governor. The deadline for businesses to apply for this is July 1st. It's the first day they're allowed to apply, and it's the deadline because generally, what happens is the money is exhausted in that one day. The eligibility for business qualified businesses, including pass-through entities, may apply for the credit against the following Pennsylvania taxes. So if a business, most corporations, S corps and C corps pay one of these taxes, corporate net income tax, capital stock franchise tax, bank and trust company share tax, title insurance company share tax, insurance premium tax, mutual thrift institution tax, insurance company law of Name 221, and personal income tax of S corporations, shareholders, or partnership partners. So if there is a corporation that does business in Pennsylvania and pays one of those taxes, then they are eligible for this program, and we are eligible to receive that money through the Blazer Foundation. Our approval ask, and EIO as an educational improvement organization involves the foundation submitting narratives to the state for programs that demonstrate innovation and are advanced in nature and are tied to the core curriculum. 80% of the EITC donations must be used for the designated narratives that we, the designated programs that we submit and our narratives to the state. There is one-page online application for the businesses to complete. I can help the business owners with this one-page application. If people would like more information, they can contact myself or the state's website is www.newnepa.com. And this program is sponsored by the Department of Communities and Economic Development. And my hope really is, this is how the Blazer Foundation can really make a difference in the district without us having to pay extra taxes or people having to make individual donations. This has a lot of promise, and I really hope that the people that hear about this program will be ambassadors and help tell other parents, other business owners, and share this opportunity. I am happy to talk to any of the businesses if people can make introductions for me. The focus on the next three days is to finalize the EITC presentation and the EITC brochures that we will have for the public and also for the businesses at the meet and greet on May 30. Our foundation board needs to vote on a strategic 12-month plan that we talked about last week. We're going to continue to brainstorm and plan and finalize with the staff administration on what we're going to present to the Blazer Foundation Board for approval to fund. We're going to reach out to class reunions and alumni information with information about the foundation. We have started to spread that data base, and we will continue to do so. We thought if we focused on the class reunions every coming up this summer, that would be the best place to start. We are making an effort to build up the volunteer list. We will be possibly searching for free donated office space in a convenient location to help with the whole volunteer situation. We will continue to update the website with more information, and we are working on developing a grant-related team and a team of volunteers for special events. And we are looking for volunteers, so anyone that is dedicated to making a difference and would like to get involved, we would love to have you aboard. The board of the Blazer Foundation, and I thank you for the opportunity to.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions?
Mrs. Collins, do you have a location you want to have your offices between Burden Forest or Anthony?
I don't think we have any particular location in mind, just something that would be convenient, that volunteers could, you know, be able to help and.
How much space would you be looking for?
I live just in office space. I do, I do believe that, you would have to check into that account, but I believe donating space to a tax-accepted organization, there may be some financial benefit to that as well.
Was it that you know what type of money is going to be coming in from the EITC? Is it this in August, September? When do you get that information?
You know what, I'm happy to, maybe, do you know any other? that information, it's on the website. It's not really complicated, but there's very strict deadlines and very, the state requires that after so many days, I believe it's 60 days after you make the donation, you have to receive the letter from the foundation stating that there's, there's several pieces of paperwork on the foundation's behalf, and also just letting the business notify the state for that. But you're looking usually around 60 days after a donation is made.
Thank you. Can we donate space within one of our own buildings?
Yes, I'm not sure we get a tax benefit for that. We don't pay taxes, but, yeah, we can certainly donate space in one of our own buildings.
I believe there's available space.
Any other questions for Ms. Conlon? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, anything from buildings and grounds? Personnel approvals, do I have a motion for-
From A through C.
A through-
I'd like to break that out, 11A to A 1, 2, and 3, break out 4.
I'd like to open up-
Go back in, go back in.
We can discuss it if you want, but no form to discuss that information. Okay?
Okay, um, so there's no amendments to the motion? Is there seconds to the motion?
Second.
Okay. A through C. Um, okay, having said that, any discussion?
Yeah, I, we, we, A to 4A is the accepting the resignation of marching band director, excuse me, instrumental director of our school, Zachary P. With the marching band getting ready to start summer practice, how to direct her, we need to get the director replaced.
We, we have a two-week window where that starts?
Right, but our next voting, our next meeting is three weeks out of us, and that-
Correct. I'd like to bring Mr. Henkel up to share that information on that resignation of, of Mr. Cooley, and, and the possibility of a replacement.
You would like to know regarding Zach's resignation? I got that this past week. Mr. McGowan has expressed an interest in writing to return to his previous position. From my understandings of talking to him, he took the year off, he completed his management program, and he would welcome the opportunity to return as the marching band director. I've had numerous discussions with him, and when I came to the district, the marching band under Justice Direction was nothing but excellent in competitions and football games. So I would wholeheartedly endorse him being reappointed into that position.
Would you be willing to take on the Memorial Day parade this coming weekend? We're really short down, and we don't have someone to-
That's only a week from today, no, we're good. I, I talked to Justin, I said, "Justin, I don't know which stretch we're going to go here," and he said, "Tom, listen, the Daniel Boone will be represented in that parade in some capacity, no matter what." So-
I mean, experiencing the program with my older son for four years, he's excelled at it, I don't know, and I'm not, hopefully disrespecting our teacher, I don't know the teacher that's there as long as he is during the day and night. You know, he's pretty much turning lights out this day and night. So I got to give him a dedicated man, I do give him that. It is for the kids, and I think the program is a top-notch program. I, I'd like to make the motion that we vote on Justin McGowan to accept his position as band director, as marching band-
Do we have a motion on the, on the floor already?
Okay, so I'd like to second.
No, 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 we already have a motion to approve-
One of this motion first?
We have a motion of, yeah, we have a motion to approve the personnel as listed.
Do we have some obligation to make that apply?
Are there any other comments on, on the personnel?
This is just accepting the resignation of Grant and the other ones.
Yes.
Correct, and then if there's two pots, I'd like to bring a motion to the floor for you to decide, you can do that at that time.
Okay, uh, any other comments? All right, seeing none, can we get a, okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Okay, so for clarification, it's 11A through C, as written, Mr. Shuhu is votes, Mr. Curtis is second. Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz? Yes. Mr. McCullough? Yes. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhu?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay.
Now, can I make the motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make the motion for board to accept Justin McGowan as marching band director for the Daniel Boone School District for 13, 14.
I'll second that.
Dr. Otter raised a point as to whether or not there's a posting requirement under the collective bargaining agreement. I don't have my copy of the collective bargaining agreement with me.
I think you're-
You'd like to get it, right? Oh, I'm sorry, I said, there's a question whether or not the filling of an extracurricular position requires a posting, and unfortunately I don't have my, um-
You can pull it down off.
I'm trying.
None of you got a copy of it, so I'll take it out. Can we, can we just table that one and move on to the rest of the approval process till we get some chance?
What can we talk about at the end of the meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Table. Does that vote, the table?
All right, um, do you have a motion to table?
Motion to table, we still second.
For a second, okay. Moving on to item D, motion to elect a school board treasurer of one term effective July 1st.
I'm electing Connor Curtis, second.
First, and we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, um, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Actually, do we do a roll call vote, Mr. Supers, or do we do a straw vote?
Well, is there any other, are there any other nominations for treasurer?
Close the motion.
Is that like close, like a motion close?
If there's no other nominations, it can be a combined motion to close and elect Connor Curtis as school-
Yeah, the motion to close, just treasurer.
Okay, I see a second.
Second.
Okay?
Then I can do a straw vote.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
You want a roll call vote?
Or a straw, straw vote, just go around, you got to name the, I mean, I think this is just a yes or no here at this point, you got one person.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. Mabakwa?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhu?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenero?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to E, motion to elect a school board secretary for a year term effective July 1st, 2011.
Call?
Okay, there's a second?
I have a nomination, Monica Hamel.
Okay, there's a first, a second?
You don't need, you need a second?
I don't know.
No, you don't need, you don't need a second. Typically, we would have a motion to close nominations.
Now you have a motion to close.
Who, who made the motion to close?
Scott.
Scott.
Second.
Okay, so we have Ms. Hamel and Mr. McCullough.
Correct. Now, when the roll call vote, it's the person, right, Mr. Dubers?
Right.
Correct. Okay, Mr. Mabakwa. Mr. McCullough, Mrs. Hamel. I'm sorry, Mrs. Hamel, okay? Mr. Potts?
Mr. McCullough.
Mr. Shuhu?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Mr. McDowell.
Mr. Semenero?
Mrs. Hamel.
Mrs. Hamel.
Mrs. Hamel.
Mr. Curtis?
Mrs. Hamel.
Mr. McCullough, Mr. McCullough, and Mr. Basil.
Um, Ms. Hamel.
Okay, congratulations.
Motion to approve the following resolutions.
The motion for F. 1. Second.
Okay, we have a motion for F. 1, and a second discussion.
Again, I just want to make sure, I mean, get that, sure, we've got the agenda. Uh, Dr. Otter, you have a number of these that are interspersed, I want to make sure that when we're voting on this, the public knows what we're voting on based upon, a requirement based upon population decrease in the district, and which ones are based upon curtail in a program for budgetary reasons. And, and I know that there were a number of that that were done based upon student population decrease.
So, yes, that is correct.
So, and then tell me what number one is?
Number one is based on declining enrollment.
Hold on one second. Right, right, right. I think there's a legal issue here.
Well, maybe let Brian explain it.
Or we want a rule to do it.
Right, I think there's a legal issue here.
We could break for a, a recent session.
Break for a recent break session? Okay, we'll take a short recess.